Hi, Joe.
Hi there. Sorry I'm late.
Oh, no worries. We're we're gonna start right now. Now that we have a forum, so we'll open the meeting and begin with any comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody have anything? Any comments?
Just a couple of things that they
Want to come join us? That way they'll see you better. So Ian Campbell is here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ian Campbell of Lumbren Woods 117 Hannan. I'm just here because I'm very interested in seeing development in Williston be done accurately, but also responsibly. I grew up in Georgia for a month. We moved here in 1970 when I was two years old. So I've seen a lot of growth happening. I went to UVM, went to Essex High School prior to that. I guess what I'm asking everybody to do to make sure we're all on the same page, and we take a sort of a step back and a bird's eye view of Chittenden County, Franklin County. Williston is in a unique position because it really when we talk about what is the growth center is something which is only a couple of decades old. I had my first rental townhouse was in Country Crossing, that's what it used to be called, back when Hanaford was the only thing really aside from Walmart in what is now the Growth District or the New Zoning District. I guess what I'm just trying to say is that, you know, it's it's all fine and well to talk about how we're going to try to figure out how to make modifications to zoning, encourage perhaps people to subdivide their properties to be able to to add extra housing. What I'm concerned about is how can we convince or how can the townspeople be convinced that we really should be focusing on a new growth center and make that where development occurs? But more importantly, how are we going to attract developers to go there? Because to be perfectly honest, it's all about money, profits, and I just don't know whether they have the option or if the labor is there to really make the development occur at the rate that has to happen. Maybe this is a bigger discussion which is going to happen on the state, federal level, and hopefully there will be incentives that occur as long as we have the administrative administration means to do so, you know what I mean? But the fact that we don't have a core urban center, if anything called urban in Williston, that's, you know, that's kind of a striking point for a lot of people. They don't really know how to adapt to it. Manouski, South Burlington, Burlington, even St. Albans have done very well because they have already established city centers and they consider repurposed property, not simply. They have repurposed property. What I see in Manouski is absolutely amazing, the revitalization and the fact that responsible growth can occur and you're pretty affordable housing. We need to figure out how that's going to happen, but also encourage either developers or those that have the means to do so to focus their efforts there because otherwise I just I'm concerned that it's just not going to happen at the rate that we need. So whether that's a discussion for the entire town to think about, I feel that it's really important that we really focus not only on talking about how we have development occur in all areas of the town, but that we really try to establish it's a tap corners as the sort of the new, the urban center of Williston.
So let me ask you this. Can we, you know, that's kind of been the plan for and the and the action for at least I would say probably 15 years. So is there something in particular that you feel like is is missing or is not going in the right direction?
Well, I guess what I'm concerned about is, and again, this may be off the ladder about, you know, how is this going to come to fruition? How are we actually going to get? Because again, populations are increasing. People want to live in Chittenden County, live closer to where they work. And, you know, you also have the issue of, you know, what incentives can, will there be for developers either to come that aren't here already or those that already are to take on projects to do so?
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
One is, have you read the Form Based Code results, the project of that with the urban development districts and all of that?
Yes, I have, I have.
I was just, I was interested because you mentioned that there's no mention of the word urban in our zoning. We don't have an urban center.
I apologize. I didn't mean to imply that. My concern more has to do with what incentives for those that have the means, the financial means, the to do so. Will we get to be able to encourage?
That was the other question I was going to ask, which is, what makes you think we need to incentivize development? Williston has got, you know, 10 years worth of residential growth already sort of mapped out and doled out in the growth management process. Like, we seem to have no shortage of developers interested in building projects. We've got the Essex Lions Church project happening, got one after another. What makes you think we should put additional incentives in place in order to sort of drive profitability when housing prices are at an all time high, the ability of developers to sort of, you know, turn a profit is effectively at an all time high?
Well, exactly that. We need to encourage developers, have incentives of developers, will create housing that costs less than what the the current median is. Whether you're talking about Finney Crossing or what's going to happen in the Amex, I really wonder whether
You're saying, what are we going to do to incentivize more affordable housing? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
I thought you mentioned development overall.
But that lends itself also to higher density housing. So I graduated in 1990 from college. I rented for 10 years. You know, apartments first with two other roommates and then with one other person, what was in four different places. I didn't have a mortgage until I was 30. And even then, it was a condo. It was in Colchester on Severance Road. So I don't know whether it's expectation of people that or it's or what it is, but again, the kind of ideas that are in the Form Based Code, that's the kind of thing that I would like to see happen. But in order to have that happen, you have to have developers who are willing to actually take on projects like that and for them to either be able to manage it or that's going to be something that they find lucrative for themselves, whether it comes from the funds that are given, offered to them by the town, by the state, or by other means. And that's why I said this is probably a much bigger story or a much bigger discussion that we need to have. But my concerns are that, again, left to developers, we're not going to see the amount of housing and also the affordability of housing that we really need. There's plenty of higher end properties that are currently there to encourage people to come move here. We need to have it be more affordable. And along with that, that comes with, again, exactly how I did it, I didn't have a picket fence until 32 to have that kind of housing be be created because it's not happening.
Well, thank you. Thanks for clarifying. I will just, just if I can have one response to it, which is just, yeah, I mean, that's effectively exactly the meeting that we're having right now. The agenda for the majority of this meeting is how do we meet our housing needs with enough affordable housing and all that? So you've come to the right meeting. It's, I'll also just encourage you that that has been the focus of all of my time so far, limited as it is on the planning commission. We've been talking about everything from how much parking do we need or not need with housing? How do we, you know, structure the Form Based Code such that we get denser housing in the growth center, et cetera? So this project is not, doesn't stand alone. This this planning commission has focused very heavily on how we use the growth center as a way to incentivize and even, you know, effectively require denser housing in order to try to meet some of those same goals. So I think we're very much on the same page, or at least I am.
Yeah, I want to answer Ian, just that I view this as a part of things and Melinda's here and she is our housing, what's the rest of your title after energy?
Energy and Community Development Planner.
Community Development Planner. And if you look at projects like the one in Heinsberg where how, what it was Habitat for Humanity and the Chittenden County Housing Authority and Trust and are all working together. And if you look at the projects in South Burlington where the UVM where UVM and others are working together, and it's actually, I noticed to my surprise that it was Chris, what's his name? Snyder was building that project. And so the thing that brings these coalitions together is someone like Melinda who sees somebody having an interest and can talk to each other so that they can coalesce around a plan. I was just speaking of historic examples again, where Williston has, where the growth hasn't occurred. And again, pointing out that Williston at least tap corners. It, that's a new growth area compared to what we have in the rest of the state in Franklin County, Chittenden County, and I believe it's been not easier, but it's been a more, a more natural thing for communities like South Burlington, developing, you see there, Manouski especially, and even Burlington to to make changes to existing property and redevelop. We don't see that happening here because it's all new still.
If I might just like address one of those points, and that's that in South Burlington with their city center, I think that took like a lot, a lot of years of planning and putting a lot of money into, you know, like their Tiff district.
The road to nowhere, but that would never lead to something.
So I mean, I think that, I mean, maybe it seems natural now, but you know, I mean, I can certainly remember a time when none of that was there and then you had, you had the vision of South Burlington wanting a city center, but it took like many years to
Do you feel that it's going to be a 20, 30 year process? That's something that Vermont is willing to do, just like South Burlington did for its own town center or at least for developing that open land?
I think it could take, I'm not sure how many years, but it's gonna
Again, it's the labor. Where are the people going to come from? They can, they still labor. They don't exist. Industry is suffering and you need a generation of people to to build, but also the businesses to be able to to hire them. True. Again, it's not a disaster, but again, my, you know, I just, I'm just curious to see, you know, exactly what the the steps are going to be and what kind of a timeframe we're looking at.
Well, I think we, you know, I mean, a lot of tap corners has been built out and the parcels that remain are are either redevelopment, knocking down existing buildings or you know, there's a couple of small, smaller parcels left. So so we have filled in quite a lot in the past 10 years. I think you know, the Form Based Code, with the Form Based Code, what we, what we hope to see is higher levels of density and intensity and also you know, an adaptive reuse of parking lots, big box stores that are out or, you know, whatever it might be. And and increased particularly, you know, most of the focus in the Form Based Code is residential. And so, so I think we're, we're on our way. And I think we're, you know, and I think we have a pretty good relationship with the, you know, as much as you can with the development community in terms of, you know, identifying what our expectations are. And yeah, and so I would, I guess I would kind of echo Alex and say, you know, hold on and stay for the meeting because this is very much the topic.
And I'm very encouraged, especially knowing that Melinda, what you do is what you do. That's there. So you're gonna solve it. No, 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 again, again, it's, it's the idea of, you know, we have a developer who has done a very lot of, a lot of lucrative properties. Snyder has, you know, we're talking about Shelburne, Quiniasco redevelopment or Brendan Woods, of course, Finney Crossing, Creek's Edge, all big projects. But in the grand scheme of things, the average property value for those are high and the density is low. And so what was the enticement for South Burlington? Was it just such a big thing? Are you sleepwalking?
So that's, again, I wanted to add one thing to the response, which is some of the things you brought up, like worried about workforce availability and stuff are out of our purview, at least that's what I look at it. So
Yeah, you got a lot of folks on there.
Yeah, help yourself to water in the kitchen too.
Yeah.
That are, I look at it as we are trying to create the environment where the, you know, we live in a free market environment where capitalism has a role and we, and where people don't like to talk about the balance, but a balance is regulation and zoning and so forth. That, that, so that it's not totally free, but it's is free within that. So we're creating this environment where those things should happen. But it's not our worry whether the workforce is there or not. That's, the market should drive that. And so that it just limits what I'm, at least what I'm considering, and it is how to make the environment, how that happen, but not how the detail level that you're going to of who's going to build it and who's going to be the developer. To me, that's not the, where I, I don't have any
Right. No, I totally understand. And it's, it's not the issue of who it would be, but it's, it's the issue of, you know, will the developer be there to be, that will take on that project to execute what you're here doing?
Yeah, sure. Hopefully you'll see things emerging that are in line with what you're hoping for. Okay, so we have a forum now, so let's let's go ahead and shift to minutes. I had made a couple of adjustments to the minutes. Does anybody else have any comments?
I did not have any comments.
Yeah, no. Okay, so Emily, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say I can move to approve as amended if everybody else is
Yeah, okay, um. So Tiffany and Ellie stepped out for a moment, but I think we can just vote all in favor. Oh, sorry. Do we have a second? After, oh, thank you, Joe. All in favor of the minutes as amended? We have four. Okay, so let's hear about the Library and Community Center Scoping Study.
I think Emily, do you want to?
Yeah, so really quickly, the Community Center Scoping Study is publicly launched. April and May, the scoping committee's focus is interviews as part of their input survey process, or March and April, excuse me, is the interviews. And then May will be a broader, more traditional survey. So we're hoping to get the planning commission teed up for an interview, although individuals are welcome to go to their website and sign up. When I think in the agenda, there's, this is their town website page that lists the committee members and then oh, maybe I forgot to link it. I think it's willistoncommunity.com. You can sign up for an interview. But the next couple of months is going to be input mainly focusing on what do people want? What does community center mean? What amenities? And then after all that input, the consultant will work on the, the where and a couple of concept plans that the community can give feedback on. So Monday, they're at town meeting. On Thursday, the community will be Thursday, March 9th from 10 to 6 p.m. And stay tuned, we're hoping to get the planning commission formally interview this part of this.
Great, okay. Sounds really good. And yeah, I saw the, you know, some portrait and that was great to see. I feel like it's going to be really important to, I don't know how much turnout they had at the one, the two that have already happened, the sort of these dates here, March 4th.
Yeah.
Yeah, Saturday was the snow day.
And there was, there was a lot of people at the table and I picked up one of the surveys last night at the town meeting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I, I think this process they're doing is really clever with the interviews because it builds community. You get to meet and chat with one of the steering committee members and form a relationship. And then it'll go into the more broader survey in May. I think, Matt, everybody's getting a mailer.
Yes, there's a postcard going out that you should see as well that has information about the survey process and how to get involved. So I think that's going out this week.
All right. Okay, so let's move on then, unless there are any questions about that. Let's move on to the revised housing needs assessment and updated list of policy changes.
Yeah, so I can just, so I I and Darren from CCRPC did make some revisions to the housing needs assessment based on the feedback that you gave us. And I can kind of go through that very briefly now if you want.
I tried to scan it and see them and I saw several that made all, they all made sense to me that I saw. But it would be helpful for you to highlight them because it wasn't change tracking.
Right, yeah. So first of all, throughout the document, I just made sure that jobs to homes index was referenced.
The version I had had it backwards.
Yeah, I know. And then I was, I corrected it.
Okay, after, so after the 3323 version, okay, because I was like, wait. They're all the same, but they're wrong. No worries. Okay, that's great. Okay, that was one of my comments, questions.
And then, um, let's see, on page eight.
Can we see that here while you're
Yes. So there's, you know, for the all, the paragraph about jobs to homes. And then down on eight.
Oh, I just wanted to comment. I really appreciated the, I think it was that graph you just flew by a moment ago.
This one?
Uh, no, a little more.
This one?
Yep. That was, I think you, did you just redo this one proportionally? Because I think before we only had numerical values
Oh, okay.
For each town and it was kind of, I can't quite read what this is, but
Cost burden by 10 year.
Oh, maybe I'm thinking, maybe it was a different one, the same color scheme. You know, sorry, it was a different one. It was just that in the original, we have been given raw numbers.
Right, that was changed too and it'll get
Yeah, so that, okay, that's great. I did just wanted to say I appreciate the, the charts are really nice and easy to read.
Okay, um, and then
Could you set your width to page width? Or just expand?
Sure. There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I know, because it's, it's hard to learn, but and then we, you had mentioned kind of wanting to see like a finer breakdown of
Yes, the retail jobs versus services as a whole, yeah.
Right, and while we didn't, yeah, while we, while we didn't completely break it down in this graph, I believe I put a link. Oh, yeah, right here. This one, this link will take you to Department of Labor page with like an even finer breakdown. And just kind of while we're on that, I just thought I came across this graph, which was also pretty, pretty neat because it gives you just about every job category there is and it shows you the wage. And then that line that you see is the housing wage, so the wage that you would need to make to afford
A median house.
Median, yeah, median price home. So that's I thought that was pretty cool. But this is, and this is not for Williston, it's for, oh wait, this is for Vermont. So this is for the Burlington, South Burlington metro area.
Can that link go in our minutes or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could I ask a quick question? I read somewhere that two median incomes in Chittenden County, well, maybe it's just Williston, is still not enough to afford a mortgage on the medium price of a home or its mortgage or for equivalent rent, et cetera.
That could very well be
It's correct.
Two median incomes in Chittenden County cannot afford a median price home.
Right, and in Williston, and I guess that's true for people who work in Williston. Because we are so skewed toward the low end of the service industry for the workers in Williston.
That's a key point, obviously.
Yeah.
And yeah. So this shows you a little bit
Yeah, that's a good ground for that.
Yeah, so some of the jobs and and how far that wages from being able to afford a median price home. And then, let's see, last one here. Oh, this is the graph that Darren changed. Where estimated proportion income control runs by municipality. And then this is Williston's and then that just gives you a better picture relative to other towns. And I think that
That one too, that was good. Because I think that one, we didn't, we didn't have a chart before. And this was really helpful, the jobs to probably subsidize affordable apartments.
Yeah. And then I think that was it, pretty much. I think, and I'm not sure, Darren may have written some more into the recommendations. Oh, okay. Yeah, he did on page 22. I think he added a recommendation based on your feedback on allowing more flexibility for home sharing and service supported, supporting, encouraging home sharing, service for housing.
Yes. Yeah, and I, I saw, I didn't think anything was added about short term rental.
See.
Which would be in the recommendations.
Yeah, and I think maybe, I thought we took out some, I think he had put in language about short term rentals before and we took it out because of the feedback of, I think it was, it was in there before as like supporting ability of property owners to do short term rentals to
Okay, so there was a, because to me, I would, I feel like at some point it's going to hit Williston the way it hit Burlington, maybe not as hard. And I wish that we were right upfront saying you can have short term rentals if you're in a, if it's in a home, a building or property that's occupied by the owner, but not that you could do it, depending on if you're not, if you're not a resident of that building or that parcel.
I recall some discussion that there was not that big of an impact, that there was effectively like only one or two short term rentals in Williston. And even Burlington, it's one of these things that gets brought up at every meeting, but there was only a handful of actual properties.
Yeah, no, there's like 25 entire homes are in a short term rental in Williston.
25?
Yeah, and I know that at least one of them is not owner.
Yeah, but then some of, a lot of those are snowbirds though, too, right? Like they're not necessarily available year round?
Then I think second homes are, are just categorized differently.
They're different. So when we looked for the number of short term rentals, we actually used a monitoring tool that looks at VRBO and Airbnb and maps them out. There's about 25 short term rentals that are not hotel rooms at the semester, which have been listed that way apparently. And of those, I would say maybe two thirds are an entire home, maybe a third are, you know, a basement bedroom or something like that in somebody's home. And I think, you know, there are, there's two things I'm hearing. One would be a recommendation to, you know, continue to monitor this. Look, look for does it start to show up a lot?
Look, look for, does it start to show up a lot? And, and the other is, if the town were to pursue control over that, it might be better through an ordinance than through zoning. And I don't know that you need to be that specific in this, you could just say, you know, this could undermine housing that would otherwise be available, that would be affordable. Consider monitoring it, consider regulatory strategies to deal with it. I will say this, you know, over the many years, we get a lot of questions about people renting things out. My neighbor's renting out a bedroom to somebody. Is that allowed in zoning? We say, you know, we, we don't regulate that sort of tenure. Uh, we don't regulate who can live with who else. Uh, my neighbor moved away and they're renting their house out to somebody else. We also don't regulate that. Um, and that has precipitated down to, you know, my neighbor's renting their house out as a, as a short-term rental, do you regulate that? And the answer right now is, there's, there's a person who's paying to live in that house and they're living in that house, and we, we are out of it. Um, and, and we've had that luxury because there's so few of them and, and we haven't, at least I have not gotten complaints about them. Like, oh, it's really impactful, there's people coming and going all the time, you know, the kinds of things that you hear about with Airbnb. Stay tuned, I mean, you know, there were some attempts in the legislature to bring short-term rentals into an inspection regime, they were revoked off last year. Um, there's still some stuff out there about that. There is some understanding, I think in the pending legislation, that short-term rental can impact housing. So I think there's something that's. That's my concern long-term, is that ten years from now, if there's five hundred of them, it's kind of late to try to rein it in. And so I would rather, even if we don't have it in regulation at this point, whether it's a, the thing you said we would probably do rather than a bylaw, an ordinance, I don't care if it's an ordinance or a bylaw, a zoning bylaw. But I think that we should recognize the potential of problem, given what's happened in Burlington, because our, it undermines our goal of housing. And it, it's, it's, I have no objection to it in other ways, I, you know, neighbors might not like it, but it's, as you say, we haven't regulated who can do what in their homes, as long as it's used as a single thing, you know, for its purpose. But it undermines the whole reason why we're setting up structures, we're setting up to encourage more affordable housing. And so I would like something to be on the record somewhere somehow, that says we intend to not have short-term rentals undermined what we're doing, however, we can state that as a recommendation in that document or as some other way.
I like what Matt said about monitoring it, because I think it should be something we monitor and consider for future regulation, but right now it's a red herring.
No, it's not a red herring.
Right now, it is, very much so. There are communities all across this country with less than half a percent, less than a quarter percent of their housing stock dedicated to this, passing laws against this. It is something that has sort of caught the national zeitgeist, but in most communities has no meaningful impact, including in ours right now. I mean, we've just said that it's less than twenty full homes for rent here on that basis, and I would be willing to bet a good chunk of those are people who are here half-time or three-quarter time, renting out in the winter.
If someone's here half-time and they're renting their house out the other half-time, that's not a short-term rental.
No, they can offer it for short-term rentals during that period of the year. These tools that monitor it don't tell you, hey, this house is only available for two months out of the year for short-term rentals.
If they are a resident of Williston and that's their home, that doesn't meet the criteria I was saying to somebody that doesn't live on that property. And so if they live in Williston two months of the year, then maybe it would qualify to meet, the criteria I'm making is, I'm trying to make, is not what you're describing, Alex, and I don't call it a red herring because it's something that actually has happened in a town next to us. And we're right now trying to set the parameters to encourage affordable housing, so I'm just saying, to me, it's not a red herring, and it's not what you're describing, it's something we need to do more than just monitor. And I don't know what the next step is, but I don't.
Appreciate it, but respectfully disagree.
Can we look into some options in terms of like finding out more about what would constitute monitoring, what would constitute an ordinance? What would, if zoning were to touch it, what would that look like? Because I think that might help us have a little more clarity.
We could also put something in the town plan during the next rewrite, which is about intention.
Yeah.
Or aspiration.
Um, other recommendations that you wanted to flag for us, Melinda?
Um, well, so, so, so Matt and I drafted a, just sort of a, a bullet list, that's the one. Let me share.
Yeah, I get confused about what you're sharing.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, too, um.
Is the document that they picture more detail to do, or is that?
It's, well, is it Williston Affordable Housing Bylaw chapter?
Yeah.
Let's go on to the email.
All right, here we go. Sorry about that. Um. Yeah, so, so this is just like a, a list of sort of next steps of
Yes.
regulations to consider, both kind of the big picture, talking about providing inclusionary zoning, it's an alternative path to growth management or residential project approval. And there's, you know, a couple of things, few things to consider within that, and that's, one is requiring inclusionary zoning for all projects in the Form Based Code district and eliminating growth management in the Form Based Code district. In the ARZD, kind of, you know, you can think about the effectiveness of growth management, given the fact that we are getting seventy-five percent open space. And we have an official map that, where we can get desired trails. And also think about requiring inclusionary zoning in the ARZD. Um, and then, another option to consider is retaining that growth management option in the RZD. Um, and thinking about adding some design standards in the RZD. And then there's, you know, we talked about some smaller kind of levers to pull related to exempting small projects from growth management and inclusionary zoning. And, you know, let's see. Yeah, so like, things like adding up to four homes to make system residential property, make that exempt from growth management. Um, adaptive reuse projects, converting to residential, perhaps thinking about making that exempt from growth management. And other uh, things like hotel conversions to affordable housing, think about making, making that possible in certain districts where it's not possible, like the Gateway South, where you have some large hotels that could be converted to affordable housing, but, you know, might want to think about some standards for that and, and ways to do that while ensuring that the quality of that, of, of that affordable housing is maintained, like by partner and CHP or some organization. Um, and then within inclusionary zoning, there are a bunch of different things that you can consider, guidelines for that, and, and maybe just kind of thinking about those, those different guidelines, or thresholds in inclusionary zoning, like um, the size of the project that it could apply to, how much, you know, the percentage of affordables. Whether you want to incentivize in addition to requiring, whether, whether you also have density bonuses um, that go along with that inclusionary zoning. Trying to think of what other levers there are in that.
I, I'm, this is a pretty long list, and I, I feel like the first ones, the big picture ones are, we, we probably need to get past them, and I, I just wanted to weigh in that I, I'm not ready to give up growth management in the RCD. And I don't know about the ARCD because it's so few, but I'm, I'm leery of it, whereas where there's Form Based Code, and this will be to Ian's point, if, you know, if you don't have growth management in the, in that, in there, then it encourages more construction, because there's not a waiting time.
Yeah, I would echo that too, and and, you know, you know, I guess one of the challenges is going to be that inclusionary zoning in a context where we have pretty high design standards is going to be, that's, those are kind of tricky, it's tricky to match those, right, on the, on the financial side for developers. I'm not saying they shouldn't try, but, but I, you know, I wouldn't want, like, we need more housing at lots of different price points, and, and I am absolutely in favor of inclusionary zoning in the abstract. I would like to know more about what it might look like in the Form Based Code area. Like, how would that, what would the, would we, would end up sort of ratcheting up the price so high on the market rate units that it was kind of counterintuitive, so we would have this really bifurcated housing cost rather than really the middle, which is what, you know, we also need. And, you know, given that affordable is now including, you know, such a huge portion of, of of our population now, who would, who would, you know, of course it's tied to AMI, but like, wages are not keeping up with the house, price of housing.
Yeah.
Right, that is so clear from all of these data. And so yes, inclusionary zoning is one tool, but I'm, I'm a little worried about leaping into that without also considering the potential impacts at the middle level of cost. And so, some kind of scenario where we could, I don't know, like pencil out, like what, what would this, what would this mean for the Form Based Code area? Um, I think that would be really helpful, it's very difficult to think about in the abstract and work through all the really practical logistics and unintended consequences, so. Yeah, so, that's just my thought. Does anybody online want to kind of, I want to give you a chance to weigh in, not mistakenly ignore you?
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just, have you, have you had communications with planning commission equivalents and other Chittenden County towns to talk up to with Colchester, for instance? You're talking about what these are, and sort of the intersection, doing the thing they have there. Um, and again, also the developments that have gone into South Burlington, not just the town center, but also the ones on Kennedy Drive, what,
Yeah.
what is their approach then? What is the pushback then? What is their feeling about it? And again, maybe it's because then they had more established urban centers and just are older.
We, we get, and that is kind of our conduit of information on that. We do, I know, I didn't see it in today's minutes, but, or on today's agenda, but we have a a, a standing item on our agenda for updates from nearby communities, other kinds of, you know, are they, they have a proposed development, do they have a bylaw change, those kinds of things, so I would say we're fairly well informed on some of those, and Chapin is an excellent representative in that too.
I watch K- whatever, local access TV, and so I watched the, the open V board and stuff in South Burlington. And an interesting thing about that project on Kennedy Drive is that that's an example of where the affordable units are going in their own building. So you have the expensive houses, and then you have the facilities in the building, and that's a little bit of what I don't like. I like, so they have it more spread out within the project, as well as on projects, and um, so getting back to that first one, I addressed the growth management part, and you addressed the inclusionary zoning part. And, um, that, I feel like we need some, we need to to, fine-tune it, and I would, I would favor the first bullet there as it's written, which is require it, but the requirement might, has to take into account all the things you said, because I don't want to have one building that's all the, all the affordable housing, and then the next building is expensive apartments. And so I'd like to include it, but not have it produce the problem that we know it could. So I would favor the first bullet, but with all the copy at that you had. So, you know, we started adding to this document in this hierarchical way for, for really that reason. So it's like, if you're interested in the top bullet, then there's some other big picture, sort of like decision tree, and then as you get down, you know, we start saying how much affordable. Um, we look at examples of codes that had size relationship requirements. The affordable units cannot be so much smaller than, or different in size than the market rate units. Um, they must be evenly distributed throughout the building, they can't all be, you know, backed by the dumpster or in the basement.
And the percent may be able to be as low as ten percent instead of twenty percent or something.
So, so as you as a group start to make those decisions and, and in concert with other, you know, folks in town, uh, and feedback you get, because we will be working this into some public survey work as we, as we keep going. You know, talk to your neighbors and everything else, that all becomes really important. So if, if there's consensus among those who would make this decision to have inclusionary zoning be an alternative to growth management in at least some parts of town, then we go to that next level, and then we work through all of those things, and hopefully we don't make it so complicated that it's, you know, a, a game to be played, because that's the other thing into some of what Mr. Campbell said earlier about the growth center and the need to, uh, if it's desirable to have certain things happen there, the more that you make zoning a game, the fewer the players who know how to play the game end up developing the place under that zoning. And then the more you make zoning a clear statement of here's what we want, and if you developer will provide what we want, we will make this, you know, as, as easy as possible. Um, the better it all works, and that's, that's a really general statement, but I think it's very applicable here. So I'm willing to start the proposal of accepting the first bullet as a starting point. In the ARCD, I wouldn't change anything. For one thing, I think it's impractical to require affordable homes. And we already require clustering with open space. And so to me, and we only, our growth management has five a year, I think. And the performance has been quite a bit lower than that. I, I don't think there's a lot of potential yield of affordable homes in the AR unless somebody comes in with a very innovative, very unique sort of project, which would very likely show up on a specific plan. So I would just skip the second, or I would do the first one, I'm, I'm just laying my cards on the table. Saying, I would do the first bullet, I would skip the second bullet, and then the third one, it's really hard for me because the issues you've brought up, Megan, are bigger for me in the RCD.
Yes.
Because for somebody to build affordable housing in a suburban setting probably requires some really high-priced homes to offset the cost, and it, it's prob, somewhat problematic. I'm not ready to, I'm banned, and it's, I'm, I'm.
Sheila has her hand up. Hi, Sheila, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm so sorry I was late tonight, and I, I, if I've missed some of this, I apologize, but I, Chapin, I agree with Chapin's position, I think I do really want to consider that first bullet, I think that is what I said two weeks ago, and I, I really support that, and I think that. What I said two weeks ago, and I I really support that and I think that in an effort to be really considerate. About how we do it and whether it works and how it works and what it looks like. I think we we know that. We have form based code in Taft Corner in the in the. In the growth growth, sorry. We know we have four main code in that district. We know that that's a place that we want to see. Um, this type of development and where there is sort of less. Frustration that I've heard from residents about building versus the R Z D or the A R Z D. Where and especially the R Z D, we've heard a lot of frustration. And so I think if we're going to try this in Williston. Do you think it makes sense to try it in one one place where we think it's probably going to be the most successful? And where we know we have sort of a lot of these other parameters in place. That's all.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I I agree to have been accept. I think that there are also tools in R Z D that. Um, I actually have some questions about, so. For instance, we had talked about. With regard to the Glazer specific plan, we had talked about like, okay, well, what if you didn't include garages? Right, like that there just cut out like twenty five, thirty thousand dollars right there, right? Um, and then another question that occurred to me is, um, and I don't, I don't actually know. Do, you know, do subdivision type developments, is the land on a lease? Or is it owned outright?
Much of what we see is the land being owned in common with what's called a footprint lot right at the foundation of the home itself. That provides the buyer with some access to some FHA programs that you you can't get into if you don't own the dirt under your. Um, we do also see subdivisions that are a mix of an owned lot uh, product. With a building envelope on it and also a pre-built product that's sitting on common land and maybe even duplexes or like with summer field things up into the sixplex world. So it's all over the place.
Right, so I mean, that's another tool that could potentially be important is that. Um, you know, for affordability in the R Z D. Having, you know, commonly owned land or um, you know, you know, whatever it is, a ninety nine year leasehold. There's something along those lines. Um, also then takes the land purchase out of that scenario and potentially, I don't know. I mean, I haven't.
Well, often what we see is when the developer totes up their costs, they just distribute that land cost, you know, into. But I know what I know what you're saying is like, if you don't have to buy. An acre or a half acre with your house, can that? Can that help? I think it can, depending on how things are configured.
Okay, because I see the R Z D as actually having some potential for. Some affordable housing and and I do feel like we should, you know, given what we talked about two weeks ago with. And and given where the state is is pushing to intensify development on places that already have sewer and water. Like, then that's where we should be, you know, really emphasizing. I mean, of course, also the form based code district, but. But um, you know, that's not going to meet everybody's needs and it's, you know, we have, we're very much kind of subject to the. Development community's timing with those things. So I I don't know, I just want to really put a plug in for paying attention to the. R Z D as well.
I'd like to respond, but Alex had his.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Thanks. Sorry, it can be hard to be seen on the Zoom here. Yeah, you, I think you said a lot of what I was about to say, Megan, which is like, I I. I want to see, I I was happier with what we talked about in the last meeting of allowing. People to get around growth management by adopting inclusionary zoning. As opposed to requiring inclusionary zoning only in the form based code district. Like, I I like the idea. I I do think there is a lot of potential anywhere there's sewer, right? The big cost is infrastructure, land, roads, sewer, all of that, right? It's all about, you know, uh, density is what makes things affordable. We know that, right? And seeing someone come in to say the R Z D with something that is affordable, I would be. You know, I would want to find some way to encourage that. Um, and and same thing with the form based code, I think would be more interesting. To see the results of allowing people versus requiring people, right? It's one thing to say you must have inclusionary. Housing in order to build in the entire F B C. Versus saying if you're you meet the requirements of inclusionary zoning, you are exempt from growth management. That way, if someone wants to come in and say, hey, I'm not that interested in being exempt from growth management and I want to go build, I don't know, luxury condos or whatever. They at least have an option to bring that to the table to be considered under the form based code. As opposed to saying that's not an option at all. So I I don't love the word require there and I don't love the idea of leaving the R Z D out. I agree with the comments about the A R Z D completely. I don't think that it's ever going to really make sense there and if somebody does, it's probably a special plan. So we can sort of ignore that. So I like the idea that that the inclusionary zoning is a fork in the road, not necessarily just a blanket requirement. And that you could stay in growth management if you so wanted to.
Yeah, it does make some challenging administration. Well, I guess you're dealing with growth management.
It's it's more that the vice in growth management tightens. And so, you know, we're facing, should should, um, you know. Nothing changed in terms of the limits of growth management, the R Z D, which is also the village zoning district. Because the way growth management works, it lumps those two together, is essentially booked for the next decade. Some of the other, the the small project exemptions from growth management would help a lot of that. For a lot of these little kind of lower impact things. Where was I going?
Well, we tried to deal with that way by holding a few number, a a small number out for those.
Well, that's a, that's a scoring exemption, but there is no building a new residential unit in Williston right now without obtaining. A space on that growth management chart. The exemption is an exemption from achieving the minimum required score for a small project.
And it was reined in, so it used to be four free cars that the D R B could get to pretty much any. Project and then it got reined into less than a ten and a half, less than ten and a half acres and requesting no more than two units. Which is challenging in A R Z D where you might be doing a two lot split, but you're triggering the open space threshold. You're above ten and a half acres.
So so there there, you you can run both systems and you can do that and it and it also it gives you an immediate answer to somebody who says, well, I want to build it. A, you know, substantial project in a place that's all booked up. What do I do? And you say, well, right now, your option is is to do inclusionary zoning because that would exempt you from this. So it would, it would send somebody down that path um, if things were otherwise.
Clarify, my my point would be, you know, Chapin's proposal was we keep that first bullet. And that we we not consider the next two. I would say in the first bullet, sort of combine the first and third a little bit and just say. Allow, you know, projects that meet the inclusionary zoning requirements to be exempt from growth management in both the F B C and R Z D districts.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I don't want to lose the. I would really like to to consider some design standards. And so, you know, I I don't want to lose that little piece of that sentence. At some point, we can.
Well, in the middle ground, could you do like a, as long as it achieves a minimum. Growth management score, the D R B makes findings that, okay, you're you're at least getting your thirty point minimum under these criteria. Until you could adopt different R Z D criteria. That's a complex.
It's three, three bullets deep down. That's the kind of stuff you're going to get, you're, we will help you get into is how to, you know, once we have the broader policy direction, we can. Look at our bylaw and the way it all kind of works and think about what's realistic to have the D R B debate and um, all of that for sure.
Yeah, I do think too, I mean, just this is kind of tangential, but um, your your comment about like the small projects in the village or. Other parts of the R C D, it does seem like. Some form of exemption from growth management would be in order um, from, you know, from a practical standpoint of. Encouraging, I mean, A D U's are exempt, aren't they? Okay, so what if we expanded that a little bit to be like, you know, eighty use plus, uh, you know.
That's that's, you know, honestly, there's, there's a conversation at the state law level. Where you add flexibility for A D U's until you say, well, why don't we just let people have duplexes? And and that's, and and then you go, okay, well, is that cats and dogs living together and the world's upside down or is it okay to let people? Have duplexes. Um, to to the point about growth management, some of the challenges of small projects, we have a project um, in the growth management world. It's a commercial building on Night Lane, I think. Uh, it has an apartment upstairs. It has an office upstairs. Guy wants the second office to also be an apartment. That's a growth management project. You come in and say you want to do that. We say, great, file a pre-op and in the following calendar year, March, you can come stay in case. We'll try to find a way to score that.
Yeah, right.
And and or, you know, have you ask for that exemption? And then after that, you can, you can do everything. The other point. We will send you the staff.
It was formerly an office that had like a kitchen, so it didn't even need to be renovated to be an apartment. It was just an office.
So um, that's a, that's an extreme example, but it does happen. Um, and the other point about that, and we have experienced this before, is growth management creates. An additional appealable event in the review of a project. So and that has come up. With a small project. So it 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 adds risk.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the first bullet takes care of that first example, right? It's in growth centers, so it would. Be exempt from growth, we're getting rid of growth management in the growth.
Well, well, yeah, and and any of the small project stuff would would also take care of it. So you you know, the other, the other thing is, there is like a size threshold here where you just can't do inclusionary zoning to someone who's building one apartment. So.
Right, if we say it's twenty percent, has to be at least five.
Right, right. So you want, so if you have a small, you you know you're going to have a size threshold for inclusionary zoning projects. If your goal is housing production, you probably also want a small project exemption to.
Growth management.
Growth management. Otherwise, you're saying we've chosen the fork in the road for you. We'll see you in March at the D R B.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I I definitely. That because that, I mean. In um. The strategies for for affordable housing, like inclusionary zoning, okay, that's one tool, but. Um, one that came up again and again on some of the materials that you circulated. Uh, I don't know who added them to the previous meetings um, list, but. Um, you know, enhancing and allowing A D U's. Uh, getting rid of barriers for small infill kinds of developments or. And then actually getting rid of single family zoning, which a lot of cities are going toward. In order to allow those duplexes or or, you know, those kinds of things, so. You know, I I I do think that this, I feel like there's value here, but we also should be thinking about like the other. Kinds of exemptions or, you know, in or. To kind of goals that could be fairly easily achieved. As as kind of a whole package, rather than just like, oh, yep, okay, inclusionary zoning, that's our only strategy.
When we opened up the hood on the growth management chapter and turned it into a draft growth management and, you know, housing chapter. And including affordable homes chapter, immediately, I think the need to draft project, you know, exemptions for small stuff. Just, it just reveals itself and then you can kind of go from there.
Can you put that in the draft?
Yeah, we did. Uh, and and again, you know, once you say, okay, I like the idea of cer- certain small projects being kind of exempt from everything or or. You know, just having to go to the D R B for one hearing, then you can start thinking about, well, how far do I pull that lever? Is it? Adding three homes to any property that has an existing um, one home, is it less than that, more than that? Is it duplex, triplex, fourplex? I I was, I was driving up in the Northeast Kingdom this weekend up to Jay and I went by a um. Beautiful farmhouse that when I got closer, I realized was a triplex. It was actually three, with a little front porch out and I went, wow. That looks totally fine.
And they match the landscape, like they're very vernacular New England farmhousey style.
And so, you know, the thing with planning permission, we and we sang this song for two years, right? Like, get all your design standards the way you like them. The way you you really try to um, get what you want and then. Maybe you've got your foot on the brake of like, well, we've made development more expensive, we have really high standards for what we want to see built. And then you take the foot off the the growth management brake a little bit and then the inclusionary zone is like a little bit of a break too and you're. You're trying, you know, it's like steering on an icy road, right? You're trying to feather off that and and still get where you want to go. The other thing I will say, you know, this is a conversation that's very focused on what could the town do with its zoning policy? And we've certainly talked a lot uh, in here and also as a staff about, well. What percentage of the production of affordable homes that are needed in Williston can we expect to see from a tool like this? And my thought is it's probably less than twenty five percent of the need. Probably a lot less than that can come from these reforms. The the big wins are going to come from what we just sort of collectively talked about as programmatic stuff. Investing in infrastructure, advocating for infrastructure funding. Buying and remediating uh, parcels and handing them over to somebody who's going to build something and then hand it over to a champagne housing trust, et cetera. Uh, building the staff capacity to, I just learned that uh, low income housing tax credit, the the acronym is pronounced L I T A C. Because I sat down with a Peter Welch staffer and he's talking about L I T A C and I was talking about L I H D C and then I realized. So that's like our levels. And 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 really, the the big piece of that pie of the need is going to come from. The town working at it from those angles as well.
Okay, could you clarify, Megan? You you mentioned um, that towns are moving away from single family zoning. I didn't think we have, when I look at ours only, I didn't think it called, when I saw that for the legislature, I didn't think it applied to Williston because I don't. See anything in our zoning that says we're single families on.
We allow duplexes everywhere we allow residence.
Yeah, yeah, so we already are not.
Yeah, yeah, no, I meant in the in the sort of scope of tools that are out there in in different places. Yeah, so we're already kind of ahead of the game in that sense, but.
And the the place where you really ended the limit at duplexes is the Ag World District and that's the place where we have the bullet that talked about, you know. Working landscape housing or uh, converted historic barn or other context sensitive, maybe. That that three farmhousey triplex that I saw up in Sheldon or where it's right was. Maybe something like that. So that's another. You you, as a community, though, Williston has not had single family only zoning anywhere for fifteen, if not twenty years.
Right, yeah. But thanks for raising that.
Um, again, from the the bird's eye view, having lived in three counties in fifty years, um, they. Affordable housing is great, but without, as Matt was saying, without the infrastructure in place, it really is, it's really kind of meaningless. You need to have. Capacity people to be able to get around to and get the resources they need from that horrible house. So when you talk about residential zoning, even though it's a relatively small area, to be able to improve infrastructure so people can actually get to. And from without having had necessarily cars, you know, I think of the kids walking past where the schools are currently. I don't think the schools are going to change where they are, they'll just get bigger, um, will change size. That's what's really important. One of the reasons why I complained about some of the developments that. I've been in recent news in Wilsons because um, they are high density, but and they have affordable housing, it's great. Now, how are these people going to get to and from it? It may not seem very far, but in the middle of winter, you're going to walk back and forth, get your groceries and and where where from? Almost in half corners, we don't have it here in the village center. It all is part of. How to make it all work for people, you know. It's grand to have something which is affordable, but um. Like in Prince in Jeffersonville, that's why it's so popular, those old houses, they love it there because everything is within walking distance. Not only affordable, but everybody can be right there as a village. Another great thing, of course, also is the fact that, you know, it's a collective experience and they shut down the town for Halloween, so the kids can. so the kids can run around the streets and not have any traffic. But the, the point being is that, you know, we have to approach it so that we not only create the housing, but also incentivize um, from the state federal government to get things built so that we can actually circulate people around and have them built to get to where they need to go. And that would make it work. And then I would say, by all means, um, higher density in the residential zoning district, that's perfectly fine. Glazer property, for instance, that's one of the things I was concerned about. It's not necessarily the, 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 what would, could be, could still be the, uh, the density of that development per se, but how, what kind of extra traffic, how are people gonna get to where they need to go and um, how could that be alleviated by having resources, infrastructures they can get to where they need to go without, without vehicles?
Yep.
And again.
All, all pieces of the puzzle.
Exactly, but again, recognize that despite global warming, we are still in Vermont and we have, you know, those four, five, six three or four months now where, again, it becomes an issue, you know, how are you gonna get without a car?
We are working on that.
Yeah, we, we do have a lot of work on that. Shayla, do you have a comment?
No, I just wanna, I wanna say like, I, I agree with that and I, I hear where you're coming from. I, I do not, I feel very strongly that that should not slow us down here, because I do think we've done, we are incentivizing a lot of that with form-based code. I welcome, I think, to consider other ways that we should be doing that incentivizing all of the things you just mentioned. But I don't, I think the pace at which, like what Matt was saying, with the number of these units and the pace at which this will happen really means that like, we have to start now. And, you know, and, and again, a lot of those, the number, the, the sheer quantity that we need is gonna come.
One of the things I mentioned earlier.
Projects, nothing, inclusionary zoning, piece of it.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, before you came on Shayla, one thing I, I may have mentioned up was that, you know, how are we going to convince developers to focus on the form-based code area on the, the growth district and say, you know, we want you to build here? Because, uh, availability of labor, um, develop, developing to occur to make these things happen. Um, how many years were we willing to wait to actually see it come to fruition? You know, twenty, thirty years, like the South Bonning Town Center? It's a long process and, uh.
Well, and the, the vision for the form-based code was a thirty-year plan, so, yeah, that's kind of baked in.
Are we at a point of saying that we want to have inclusionary zoning in some form that we're gonna work out the details of in place of growth management in the growth center? Are we at that point as a group so that we could, because what I'm almost feeling is though, we're saying, do it there, don't do it in the ARZD. And we need to work more on how to do it in the R Z D. And I don't want us working on how to do it in the R Z D to necessarily hold up doing it in the growth center. We are much closer to being ready to do that. And I almost wonder if we are at a branch in our decision process.
So let's take a kind of a temperature check, um. Can I get a sense from commissioners, uh, about your feeling about form-based code district only in this, in this instance? Do, and, uh, Chipan, are you framing it as inclusionary zoning as an option to forego growth management process?
Get rid of growth management in the form-based code.
Okay, but then that, but would that then
Implement.
require, requiring inclusionary zoning, because Alex didn't like that word.
But we, we need to, but we need to say how to do it. There's gonna be, if it's a project that's one home, it's not gonna apply, you know, there's all the, and we have to decide whether it's ten or twenty percent or somewhere between and depending on the size of the project, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas we have a whole lot of the smaller levers to work out. But are we ready to say no growth management in the, in order, you know, to Ian's original point, in order to clear the deck as much as possible for developers to do what we want to see in our growth center?
Okay, so let's hear from Kate.
I, I would go, um, more what Alex was saying, which is, um, either or in the form-based code district. I would not be, um, comfortable in either of the other districts, um, but either or.
Okay, so basically having that sort of branching point where a developer comes in and either has to participate in inclusionary zoning or can, uh, do the traditional growth management route?
Right.
That, summing it up, okay?
Right. And I mean, I, I feel like with, you know, the timing, since they'd have to wait X number of years, it will definitely, hopefully, um, push people towards the inclusionary zoning, um, option. But, um, you know, just leaving another option there as well.
Shayla and, and Alex and Jill, do you wanna go ahead? Actually Shayla's next in my, my visual list here. What do you think about this? Just thinking about that first piece about the form-based code district?
Yeah, I would support, I would definitely support our miss code in place of, or sorry, inclusionary zoning in place of gross man, growth management in the form-based code district. I'm okay with that other option. I would prefer the requirement, but I, I hear those concerns and and I think it could be an interesting experiment, um, to do the branching fashion, but I, I would prefer the requirement.
Thank you. Um, Alex, I think we know what you, you believe, but if you want to restate it, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know what I believe. I think it should be an option to get out of growth management. But I do think that there are very legitimate circumstances in which you might find the requirement of it changes the nature of what gets developed. Right, so I, I think it's nice to just provide people the option, see what happens. And if we find no one's taking it up, then you can always take the next step. It's a little hard to go backwards. You, you can always sort of take, go forward in two separate steps.
Yeah, um, okay, yep, thank you. Jill, what are your thoughts?
Um, I'm, I'm with the inclusionary zoning in the F B C requirements. And I, I, for me, it's sort of taking off restrictions as much as possible. So, uh, in the ARZD, you know, if you get inclusionary zoning, then you don't have to do growth management. So that for R Z D, all of those, I think trying to, um, accelerate things is where I'm at in terms of meeting the needs we have.
Okay, um, and Kelly?
Yeah, I'd lean, I'd lean towards the requirement in the form-based code district and doing what growth management.
Okay, all right, and Chipan, do you want to restate your thing now that we're going through?
No, yeah, I'm, I'm in the required camp and I feel like what Kate and Alex are supporting, which is a either or, is, is a valid op option. I, I'm not against it. I just don't know how much administrative overhead that creates for staff.
Yeah, so my, my view is a little bit, um, you know, I, I definitely see both of these perspectives. I'm a little worried that by, um, well, so in, you can correct me and fill in the details, but in our, we have tried incentivizing affordable housing through, like, within the growth management process. And also how, is it true that, I'm trying to remember what you're saying. And we also offer some ways to get out of growth management if you do an entirely affordable
Right.
Development?
Yes, so, um, we have tried incentivizing the inclusion of affordable dwellings. It, as a component of growth management and a few applicants have taken that option. Summerfield is the best example right now. Um, they also also met a requirement that allowed for a density bonus outside of growth management. So there's, there's two things going on there. In, in projects that are in what's now the form-based code area, we usually see a fairly light integration. You know, pick up a few points at the low end of that category. One of the things about the way it's incentivized is it's incredibly, it's stratified into like five different levels of affordability. And we did that in the last growth management reform. I will tell you that it makes the math painful for the staff to calculate the score. And then to then communicate it to the applicant.
Oh my.
And, and, uh, it's not helped that, uh, the, the, um, growth management scoring happens on the dwelling unit equivalent basis and the density bonus happens on the dwelling basis, which leads to a, I think, an algorithm, if not calculus. At some point, so anyway, it's a challenge. I would say that in the form-based code area, you're probably not getting, you know, this, the number of units that your smallest I Z provision would likely require. The other thing though is, there's a really fundamental shift, I think, that's about to happen in tap corners, which is we are moving away from the large master planned project. Um, the Finney Crossing, Cotton Road Crossing Annex to the sub-two acre or sub-half acre redevelopment of a single site. That's a little tougher to, uh, score in growth management. It's a smaller project, even though it might be a thirty unit or a twenty-five unit apartment building. I will also note, because somebody said, you know, in the F B C, they have to wait till March, they don't. That was one of the amendments that came through the F B C package is that growth management, uh, score and allocation is assigned by the administrator at the time that the permit to build the building is issued. And what that means is if I'm wearing the Z A hat and we're doing a project, I do have to make a determination that I believe the project will meet the minimum score. And again, the scoring system's a little tough to apply. I, I anticipate some challenges there because it, it really is geared towards scoring something like a Finney Crossing where there are fifty-five acres on which to provide all of these things as opposed to an infill building. So just, just some things to think about, but you're, you're right about that. And then you have a second thing besides.
Oh, good, yeah, so basically we've been incentivizing affordable housing within the growth management process for a while. And we, I mean, part of the reason we're here now where we are is that it didn't really do much.
We get some, not a lot.
Yeah, so, and we need to accelerate that and we need to expand it. And, and so to what degree, you know, with all the discussions about form-based code and what you just mentioned at the end about, um, you know, meeting the design standards, how important is growth management to the form-based code district right now? Like, how much of a, of a barrier is it?
Hopefully, it's not a barrier, except that eventually the calendar might fill up. And so right now, because of the way it works and the way it would be administered, there's, there's some headroom. But if you were getting the kind of, kind and quantity of new residential in the form-based code area that you want, a logjam that kind of looks like the residential zoning district looks today, might be five or six years out. So there may be, now, providing inclusionary zoning as a fork in the road could relieve some of that, obviously eliminating it entirely to reach all of it.
Right.
But it's some of the pain that, that timed away, the fact that it was made an administrative, a piece of the administrative process, I think that does help a great deal. But it really is, you know, the form-based code area is so prescriptive, it's getting harder to incentivize things because it simply says you gotta do this. You know, so, um, and, and I think there's some, there's still some things we'll have to figure out about that, um, around some of the elements that come into those sites, but I don't know if I'm getting at the core of your question, which is.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm just trying to assess, like, okay, if we, if we want, I, I think we all want, right? Development in form-based code district and, um, and it, you know, and it to, to flesh out our, the vision that was in that planning process. And so I'm, I'm very interested in figuring out, like, what are the, what are the levers that we can pull on to make that happen quicker and easier? And, but also in a way that would, uh, incorporate some affordable housing. And so I guess what I'm sort of toying with is, okay, well, if we, you know, say we eliminated growth management in the form-based code district, but did not have a requirement for inclusionary zoning, we can pretty much kiss most affordable housing goodbye, right? And so, so, um, so, and I, this goes back to my question from two weeks ago, is like, how much of a motivator would it be for developers to be able to skip growth management in the form-based code district? Um, even if they had to provide some amount of affordable housing?
I think it's a significant motivator.
Okay, um, that, that really gets to the core of my question.
Not, not a lot of the, this part of Vermont's development PD necessarily understands, uh, growth management. That's why only a very few of them do work here. But a lot of the development PD in this area understands that Williston has this thing called growth management that they don't want any part of.
Right.
And so if, if they find out that, oh, well, there's inclusionary zoning, which looks a lot like inclusionary zoning in these other places where they might have done a project, and that means I don't have to do growth management. I do think there's value there.
Okay.
Especially from, like, projects keep having to go in back. So in terms of more appealable events, more risks, more time for the market to change. We could see projects that first went through growth management five, seven years ago, that are now trying to build their affordable units and things have changed. So the sooner you can get somebody, here's your permits, just go and not have to go back, I think that'll, that will help.
I mean, I mean.
You can more confidently commit to those affordable units, because I know I'm gonna have all of my permits in place and I can get on with construction and not have to keep going back through the system over and over again. So it shortens all that risk period.
I mean, we're seeing, we're seeing projects like the Blair Park Hotel where the siding they told us they were gonna put on has been discontinued. It's an extreme example for some different reasons, but definitely the affordability thing, when interest rates double and the price of lumber goes up thirty-five percent, um, across the lifespan of a, of a project. We start getting that, hey, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to make that number anymore. You know, I'm gonna need to invoke this clause in my covenant that lets me go above that hundred percent of affordable. We've had some of those experiences and they're, they're hard to, to process and deal with and, um, just definitely very challenging. So I, that efficiency, I think, leads to a lot more predictability for everybody.
I mean, I do think that you might want to also consider other incentives. If we're gonna keep it as like an alternative to either go through growth management or do inclusionary zoning, you might, you know, just need to think about additional ways to incentivize.
Like, what would you suggest, like, what would you mind?
Perhaps a density bonus, um, perhaps, uh, you know, uh, more expedited, you know, other ways of expediting for many. Give a couple of examples.
Less parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, so I guess after this conversation, um, I, my, my own view is, is that, um, you know, I, I'm hesitant to, I guess I'm a little hesitant to take the full week. And, and, uh, require inclusionary zoning and get rid of growth management.
Both of them?
Wait, so that's what it says up there, require.
No, but I wondered if the full leap was getting rid of growth management, if the full leap was requiring, um, inclusionary zoning.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking the full leap as both of them.
Yeah, right, okay.
They're sort of mutually inclusive, right? I mean, if you require inclusionary zoning, but don't get rid of growth management in exchange for it, then you haven't done anything, really. You've just said that we'll eventually, in ten years from now, maybe start building some more, uh, you know, housing. So if you don't put them together, then it's not particularly effective, right? It's just a question of whether you require it, you just get rid of growth management or whether it's, it's an option to voluntarily step out of both methods.
Yeah. So I think that by my count, the, the sense of the group is, is more toward requiring inclusionary zoning, um, in the form-based code district. But, but I guess this is where I'm confused, is, are we, are we, you know, those of you But I guess this is where I'm confused is, are we, are we, you know, those of you who are in, in favor of the requirement. Are you also saying get rid of growth management?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think, I, I agree with Alex. There's no way to do, you, you have to do that. I think, sorry, that's my opinion, Megan.
Gotcha. No, that's fine. I'm just really trying to make, make sure I'm clear on this. Okay. Well, I do agree with that. Um, so I, I think that we're probably in the majority on that. Um. And so, uh, I'm not sure what the next step is that we, you, you would kind of flesh things out for us, right? And give us what the uh scenario would look like.
What, and the sort of getting back to the question I was raising, which is if we are sort of agreed or mostly agreed on that first bullet. Can we move ahead with that and not have discussion about the third bullet? Um, have to happen before we can move forward on the first bullet. That was my sort of question. Well, yeah, we can, if it's for staff, yeah, we can start with the idea that it's an alternative path and then. I mean mechanically, this is all pretty easy to do in the bylaw draft. It's mostly a. You know, it's for all the commission members to just be thinking about their comfort zones around these things. So I have a question about, about um co- community involvement, which is this is a pretty important. Direction choice and. We did in the hearings for Form Based Code get a lot of comments from the public that they wanted, how come we didn't do something about affordable housing? And we were saying, because we wanna give that more separate attention. But I know there are a lot of people that. May feel that way or may not feel that way, but then worry about how fast we're gonna grow even in the growth center. And so, um, I feel as though we need to let that process through some public. Process, uh percolate to some public process. Um, and I think we need to be, I, I hope that we could have projections of if. If we allow, whether it's the only thing you do or an option to do inclusionary zoning. Be able to build as many units as you want in the growth center. What does that mean to our schools, our sewer and our town? With some kind of a projection, you know, the, where that way we are now, where we know how many how, units we can get per year because we have growth management. More or less, except for the affordability projects and so forth. You know, what's the likely impact over the next twenty years of making this change? And is it acceptable to the town or do they feel like, oh, those people sitting in that? Planning Commission room thought they knew what was best for us and they don't. So. Um, I just wanna have, make sure people are engaged and, and I personally feel like. It's, you can't have both. We can't restrict development in growth center and preserve the rate of development. In the rest of the town that people are saying strongly they don't want town to grow too fast in other areas. Um, and when I say predict, one of the predictions is if that type of housing is not gonna produce as many school kids or as much. Um, wastewater as single family suburban homes. We should, we should have some sort of quantification of that and say, well, we think we can support that much growth if that form. Because if it's affordable, it's gonna be blah, 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 blah. And so what it, what are we really taking on an impact to services that people worry about?
So Chayenne, are you saying for your, for this, um. You know, I totally understand what you're, the urge for community engagement and totally support that. Are you saying that you would like some kind of engagement prior to, to the usual on the hearing process?
Yeah. We could, we can, you know, what, I've sort of talked a little bit about survey work and I've talked a little bit about, um, some of that. Is gonna lead into the town plan.
Yeah.
Some of that will lead into this more immediate policy response and we can kind of think about how to craft. Um, that outreach piece to sort of a little bit, because what we wanna do is kind of. Pilot some of what we hope to do around a bunch of different issues for the next town plan, but we've got this housing information right now.
Right.
I, I, I enter into all of this painfully aware that saying grow more in Williston is. Something that could get you run out of town on a rail. And, and, and I, you know, I knew that when we did Form Based Code. I know, I, I knew that in twenty seventeen when Ken and I were working on, on reforming the growth management um. System a little bit and, and sort of the pushback we experienced in, in trying to do that. And it's hard because, you know, think this group, you're experiencing it right now. This is really complicated. All these moving parts, all these incentive systems, all these um administrative requirements and schedules and things like that. And um, I think there's a general perception. That I hear from citizens who come in and talk to us that things would be worse in Williston. If we didn't have growth management, at least we have that, at least that is preventing a bad thing. Uh, from happening, whether, whether it's an overwhelming of, of municipal services or the schools or just change too fast, et cetera, and. So I'm really big on informed survey, like now that you know this. What do you think of that? And Emily's created, crafted a number of those for us. We have to click the buttons as I understand before you.
Yeah, yeah, great.
And hopefully people do. So we'll, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, great. Um, Kate, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just wanted to agree with Chayenne. I think that's a, it's a really great idea. Um, I. The people who I have spoken to, um. I, I feel and that, oh, their concern for the growth comes directly from the growth center and not. I can't speak to the A R Z D. I, I don't. It's crazy, but I don't even leave the growth center, I feel like, but. Whatever. Um, but, um. The people who I speak to, um, are often, you know, the. The growth in the growth center creates traffic, creates all these, you know, these things. And then when they think about it coming to the R Z D. And of course, this is my experience because that's where I am. Um. It brings up a lot of emotion, right? Oh, we can't have more of that coming here or infiltrating the entirety of the tech, whatever it is. So I mean, I, I don't agree. A lot of people are saying that the town, people in the town don't. Think that growth in the growth center is not. You know, is, is fine and whatever they build there is fine. I think there's, you know, people have these emotions come from growth anywhere. Um, now, they don't have the same information that the planning staff and the planning commission um do. And that's why I think that reaching out and, you know, getting ideas and, and thoughts from them. I think that's, that's a really great idea. Cause it, it does concern me. Um, and I think it would concern a lot of people, um, especially when, you know, until they're um educated.
Yeah, great, great point.
And, and I think what I was asking is, can some of that education be a prediction of? The impact on services of this type of housing versus that type of housing? We can do some of that. Um, wastewater's tough, but I, I have some ideas.
Yeah.
I think what Kate was referring to is probably the um friction in Finney Crossing with the Annex. Particularly the Southern Access, uh, the neighborhoods where they were told, no, you know, no more traffic. That's a road, that's basically gonna serve you guys. And then they find out, oh no, there's not gonna be just two exits for Annex, could be a third one. And they're like, well, where did this come from? And that's the kind of communication that people are more concerned about. But when you're talking about, in my opinion, um, the growth center and the undeveloped portions that are not in that quadrant. Um, that's an entirely different story, especially talking about the idea of where, where I saw was like the biggest portion of Form Based Codes. Which is stuff around the big box stores, that area there. There's nothing there. I, any of that, that's where I'm seeing. The, you know, genormous redevelopment, rethinking of Church Street, you know, but it just, it feels great and that's, I, I can't. That's what I think that people probably would not be um averse to. Yeah, go ahead.
Church Street, Church Street. Is not really. I don't, I, I don't want Church Street in Williston.
I, I guess what I should say, i- having development in, it's the undeveloped areas that we're, right now there are adjustments in the big box stores. That's where I think the majority of the growth is going, the development is going to occur.
Some of those aren't actually in the Form Based Code District, so.
No, no, I guess my, my biggest concern is again, um, communication where there have been issues in the past of developers not being fully. Revealing of what they have planned, what they're talking about, um, kind of kind of annex to Finney Crossing, we talk about the side scrapers. How do those come about? You know, that's the kind of thing where it's, where it's more of an issue of after you receive, you receive, um. The permit to do building, what actually goes in and how much public involvement or knowledge of what's gonna happen occurs.
Well, a lot of it, I mean, a lot of it, we can't, I mean. The fact of the matter is everybody's busy and so. You know, if every Williston resident paid as much attention as, as the people here do, then there would be a lot, I mean, not. You can't make everybody happy, but um, the thing is people don't have time and you're always gonna end up with people being upset by X, Y, or Z. It doesn't matter what it is, you know, um, because you can't make everyone happy. But I mean, I think, you know, in getting. The growth concerns people for a lot of different reasons and if it's in that area, which. That will infiltrate into the rest of the town. Right? Church Street right now to me is, is not very, you can't park. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. It's, it's not a pleasant place to go. Much anymore. Um, I used to go there all the time. Um, and I just, I don't want that happening in Williston. I think a lot of people feel that way. Some people, you know. It's, it's just, you know, you can't make everyone happy, but. I do think that the, the growth is, is a concern for people and the speed at which. Quite a number of people have told me the speed at which is, is the thing that concerns them the most.
Yeah, and that's of course something that's really hard. I mean, certainly on the planning commission, like we, we don't have really much control over that. Because so much of that is like. You know, developers saving up enough. Units in their allocation and then, you know, tossing it all out once the market is favorable. And, and so some of that, like the speed piece, we can't really probably influence very.
Again, that's where I say, you know. It's a bigger. Uh, wider view of where I'm concerned that the special interests of developers and engineers. Are dictating what's going to happen to Williston, um, and.
No, I don't, I don't think that's true. Um. There, you know. And, yeah, so, anyway.
Yeah, um, it, so it sounds like we sort of have a plan for the first bullet and for. Uh, getting some more information and then starting some outreach. Uh, not open ended questions, but we, it can refer to the report on housing and say, here's this. Um, with the current growth management process, we're not getting affordable units. And um, here's a way to do it, but it might allow for more units, which actually is already true of growth management that isn't being used sufficiently. Um, and somehow quantify that and so that we're not, it's not an open ended question, like, do you want this or do you not want this? It's like, here's what we're thinking about doing and here's what's the likely. Result and is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good.
Get a comment on it.
Good summary. Okay, so what do you guys want from us at this point?
So, um. I think we heard really good feedback on. That, that first top end bullet. I think we heard pretty good feedback about, you know, various exemptions for small projects and adaptive reviews. And to continue down that path um as well. Um, I've heard a lot about wanting to continue to have a solicit information. Um, the commission wants to understand what it looks like in terms of project cost when somebody includes affordable units. I think that'll. Be a piece that we wanna bring to you when you start thinking about how far to pull those levers on, you know, percentages of units and, and at what level of affordability. And all those kinds of things. Um, we're gonna wanna work with you on what that outreach piece looks like. Uh, we, we won't just go do that. Because it's real, what's really important is what you wanna hear. From um, members of your community and, and what's the productive way to. Eng- engage them. Um, so I heard that. Um, in the, in the background, just know that we're aware of all of those other programmatic things. And we're, we're pursuing some of them, um, and all of the other support systems that need to exist for, for this stuff to uh go and, and. And work. And. And we're gonna get sidewalks plowed. By the way, our feedback on that was a totally one out from, maybe not because of us, but um. They bought the sidewalk plow with ARPA funds and are hiring extra staff from public works and are saying they're gonna plow. All the sidewalks down.
Tom should get all the credit for that.
Shayla, go ahead.
Um, I, so two things unrelated. One is on the feedback. I find it really, really helpful to know why people don't want growth, so. Emily, you're much better at this than I am, but just. Any place where it's like, do you want it or not? If the answer is no, it's, it's really helpful to understand why, because if it's. Or if it's schools or if it's wastewater, we can just, it's just much easier to do that education piece and to understand. And then the other thing is, um, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly that, that what you were saying, Madam, in the background. The other stuff you could do, are, are those pieces that we could? Not, you know, not inclusionary zoning, but other smaller pieces that would affect all three. Um, districts because I, that, that would be great if it could be, you know, the residential and the ag role. If there's the smaller things.
Things like. Things like micro transit would serve everybody. Yeah, um, so I wanna give Melissa a chance to give a little update on some of the, the transit stuff specifically. But also just say, you know, um. There's just, there's a, there's a place the town is sort of starting to arrive at and the ARPA. Stuff kind of spurred a little bit. It was like, oh, we've got some resources. How do we spend them? We've got some capacity. How do we spend it? Um, maybe we can write this kind of grant now. Maybe we can coordinate across departments in a way that we didn't before and. This group around any number of town goals, but certainly around a goal like the housing goal where you do need all of these other things. That underpin it can really um serve a valuable role in bringing some focus to that. And saying, you know, like the sidewalk plow is just a great example. It's like, here's this thing. It makes people's lives better. It helps denser places like Taff Corners work a heck of a lot better. For heaven's sake, there's people trudging through the bike path in front of healthy living. They wanna walk on it so bad, they're knee deep in snow. Um, that's, that's a big deal and there's, there's a really great, um. Strong towns like super duper simple flow chart for good planning. It says, go see where people struggle, make it a little better, go back to step one. And just do it over and over again and get those wins. So, um. We have, we, we are working on two related transportation projects, micro transit pilot and uh transit setup feasibility. Uh, study at the Maple Tree Place Parcel and I wanted to get you into a couple of minutes to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Talk about that.
Yeah, sure. Um, so, so don't like, you know, share these widely yet, but um, I just wanted to.
At least this is in the public meeting. You know, don't, don't get too.
But these are like some very, very preliminary draft concept plans of the. Uh, multimodal hub at um in Taff Corners. Um, let me, may, may, make that. So. This is the town owned parcel and this concept is just showing like two curb cuts and then. Um, this is like the place for the buses. Um, this is a couple of shelters. And you, and so it doesn't take up very much space on that town parcel. Which we were happy to see because it leaves a lot of space for like, you know, pocket park or just other things.
Future expansion.
Yeah, so. Um, so that was one, then the other. So that was one, then the other one was slightly different. It was just, let's see.
Yes, that's the start with the one big, it's, I think it's, it goes less deep into the parcel, right?
Yeah.
Because it's just kind of like a big.
Yeah, so, yeah, either concept, it's like you're left with all of this land. So it's kind of nice because there's room for. That's right. Or, you know, I don't know, just a little park or.
It doesn't show my dream, which is a interstate rest area building sized. Place with bathrooms and food.
Well, it's.
But it could go in there.
Right, right, yeah.
So. I appreciate that.
Yeah, anyway, so they're, they're, you know, they've been moving along on that project. And at some point, they're probably, you know, they may come and present it more formally to you guys.
Is there some anticipation that people would actually park in the. Shaw's parking lot and or just in the that little parking lot on the lower left?
I think this parking lot was, you know, anticipated as being, you know, they've, I guess they've shown their two. Micro transit parking spots.
What does that mean?
Where's where the car share parking spots?
Well, that, I mean, I think there's definitely room in this lot for that to happen, you know, like I think there's like. Ten, twelve spaces.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I'm sorry for, I I love this topic. But I'd always imagined that the shaws that doesn't use the back of their parking lot, the north side. That that's where people who wanted to do park and ride to either take the bus or carpool could park as part of this project. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, but I don't know how official that would be.
I mean, it could, you know.
Someday it could be, you know, we we own the land that all of this is on. And despite that, there will need to be some relationship built with whoever owns Maple Tree Place at this point. It's it's been for sale, it may not have changed hands, it might change hands. Where somebody came in and photocopied the whole file at our office.
Which part of Maple Tree?
Which part?
Yeah, like, I'm sorry, what was?
The whole thing.
The whole thing was for sale, including the housing?
Uh, no, the housing is is its own.
That's, it's okay, yeah, that's it.
The shopping center.
I see, okay.
We're we're just kind of aware that it sort of drifts in bigger currents than we often deal with. But, you know, that that little parking area was originally built as part of Maple Tree Place under sort of a lease agreement with the town. But I think has since expired several owners ago and, you know, there's all that good stuff. But I was, I was really thrilled at the amount of remaining space that existed. For whatever future purpose and, you know, this is, this is the kind of thing we talked about a lot in the Tap Corners Vision Plan. And we talked a lot about to really make Tap Corners go. The town would have to become an active partner in developing additional infrastructure pieces like this and and managing and maintaining. So, you know, like when Chape says building, it's like, well, when if is the town going to be ready to maintain and staff? And secure a building in Tap Corners or if it was a park. You know, today Maple Tree Place just goes out and, you know, they they just mow that. We don't, we don't do anything over there. But if we said, you know, it's ours and we're developing a transit center on it, it it probably means getting a mower or a trailer down there. Or could mean emptying the trash can, it could mean maintaining a restroom. Or if we received or or got a bike locker and the lock is jammed or somebody vandalizes it. So, you know, there's those little tiny steps of like, things get a little more complicated. You need people to deal with some of that. This is all really preliminary, but it's a good window into that sort of.
Great, yeah.
Much more active role in this central part of town.
It's so nice to see this take on some bones. You know, like it was just such a little splotch on the map in the Form Based Code process. Hard to really. Envision in a more concrete way that this is great.
Good, and, you know, there's space for local food and coffee vendors. Okay.
You want to talk about micro transit? I mean, we don't have an exciting picture to show, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of just getting started, the micro transit study. We're contracting with Via Mobility, which has been doing the studies all over. The state and other places too. And we're going to be forming a a stakeholder advisory committee. And I think I'm going to be reaching out to you and Amy to see if you might be interested in participating on that.
And Via is who operates the, or who's the software runs the micro transit.
Right, yeah, yeah. So they have that side of their company to the proprietary software or whatever. So, so, yeah, they're just getting started and stay tuned.
Yeah. I think there's been some neat questions asked about, you know, how might it interact with exit twelve park and ride? T fixed route service. What's the geographic area of the town that it might be able to cover? All of those things are kind of on the table to start talking about and they do really cool animated transportation modeling. And actual dots move around on that.
I wonder if hotels, if our hotels would invest in it so that they didn't have to support their own. Whatever they call it, they had to get shuttle service to the airport. And there's also a lot of, yeah, a lot of that kind of thing, your rental car companies.
Yeah.
We're, we're definitely trying to think about like who the users would be, you know, who would be the the high frequency users of this.
Are they going to do survey work about like where would you want to go?
I think so, yeah.
That's part of it as well, so I actually.
That's like a pretty basic question in transportation.
The homes and the jobs, but I think there's been a lot of experience that this type of service often gets used much more for discretionary trips.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, I want to get to Plato's Closet, I remember that example.
Oh, yeah, when I was doing that kids' project in.
Just as an aside, like anecdotally, I've heard in Montpelier, a lot of the the high school kids use the service. And they like have figured out how to sort of, like, they don't want to ride with this other kid that they don't. You know, they mess with the, with the, I don't know.
They were finding like all the bands were requested at Montpelier High School for pickups at, you know, two fifty five or something.
I have read every comment from the ser- recent survey of all that. And then, so I would like to, I I have a deep understanding of what's going on. And how it is interacting with and really complements fixed right, fixed route service that by itself, where we try to have it replacing fixed route. It has more issues than where it's connecting to fixed route.
Sounds great. All right, well, we look forward to hearing more about that. And I think if that's all that you need from us, we will.
Thank you.
Call it an evening at nine oh two.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, online friends.